Councilmember Garvis is going to be a few minutes late, but I think we can, he'll be well as proud of everything. There you go. He's here. All right, so, so you guys know, we will have the swearing in of Chief Jakopovich. Congratulations to him. And then we will have a recognition of the ice hockey team for their accomplishments this year. And then get into the roped stuff. Ordinance 12, so we had some more paperwork on that, Mark, and then everyone had a chance to review that. And so we will be doing the third read on that. Does anyone have any more questions about this parcel or the donation process or anything? All right, moving on to 22. This is the agricultural district that was considered at the last meeting. You guys got the paperwork on that. There's little to no paperwork on that. You know, we know what the county knows, and it's just up to us to decide whether or not they can join the agricultural district. Do you guys want to do second and third read on this? There's not really that much to consider. We haven't heard anything from the public, I assume. Nope.
You do have the 30-day timeframe to vote after the vote hearing, so.
So we could do it in another meeting.
So we're gonna go second only?
I'd like to do second and third, but what do you guys think?
I think you two enable people to speak. We usually do one.
We do three separate.
Okay, we'll do second this time?
Yep.
So the next one will be the hearing that we're having today, and this is renewal of the agricultural district, so let's just do first read on that today. The next one is for the bid on the driveway. Mayor or Joe, do you want to speak on that?
Yeah, I can speak to that for a minute. So this is a project for the improvements to our emergency services driveway over there. The only thing to note here is we're actually recommending contract with the second-low bidder, not the lowest bidder as we typically do. And I'll touch on that just for a minute, so everybody understands. We actually feel the second-lowest bid is the lowest and best bid. And I'll explain, the lowest bid we received was from a group called Giaga Highway. But there was a number of errors or issues with the bid that they submitted. Most notably, we've specified an 11-day period for the work to be completed, because naturally our safety forces are going to be inconvenienced when this work is going on. The bid from Giaga Highway, they actually indicated 50, that's five zero days, to complete the work. So that's noncompliant and unacceptable right there. There was a number of other issues with their bid as well that we don't even really need to discuss. I think the first one kind of knocks them out. So with that, we're recommending award to the second-lowest bid, which was by specialized construction.
So I'd like to have this one, two, three, so we can get the project rolling, folks, if that's all right? Any questions on that? And then I'll also be replacing the submit pad up at the top here for them. The next one is for the 2023 road program. Same deal with bids. Joe, do you want to speak to that?
Oh yeah, that one's much easier. Lowest bid is specialized construction, so I recommend we go with them. One, two, three, please.
Any questions on that? Thank you. The next is for the Golden Link Boulevard resurfacing. I've heard much several times, this is the final choosing of the company that'll be doing this. Anything you want to add?
No, you see the information, low bids by Perrin. They're perfectly capable. They've done work for us in the past. So we recommend Perrin. Also, one, two, three, please. I didn't plan to do it at night.
Oh, fantastic. Did they, how long do they anticipate?
It's a couple weeks. Not a big project.
They look at it at night?
They'll do it at night. Obviously during the day, there's a lot of traffic in the shopping center.
Well, when's our thought of starting?
I'm sorry?
When is their thought of starting?
I think it's late May. I don't recall the exact.
Yeah, the only reason for me is there's still trucks coming in for Panda. And I hate to page something and then have trucks roll over.
Well, you know, there also, there's all those stores there. There's going to be truck traffic no matter what. I mean, there's a little bit extra with Panda Express.
Well, coming on the main though, these semis come in the back for Lowe's.
Where in the back? You've still got to come through one driveway or the other.
Yeah, it's still going to be on.
Well, guess which driveway they've been coming in? The one by Optima that says no truck.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because they're right at Lowe's.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They end up right there. All right, we'll do one, two, three on that. This is the, is this the new position?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mayor, would you like to speak to that?
I would. So, a lot of things have happened of late. We talk about our communications and how we communicate. You guys are all probably aware that the newsletter is shutting down their print version. That's another reason why I brought this forward now. We kind of have a hodgepodge of how we communicate now to the public. And basically what's happening is there's a bunch of different people that have something to post, whether it's on our website or it's on our social media. A lot of communities are going to this where you have a person that's dedicated to that role, just to get information out of there and have that daily, where they're going and looking for the things that are out there and updating the website, making sure things are up to date. I can't do it all day. Kyle certainly can't do it all day. We've been having an individual from the rec center do it. We're pulling her off task. It's becoming a problem that we can't, we can't manage ourselves. It has to be someone else that manages that day-to-day. So we're asking to start this as a part-time position, see how this goes, and at least test it, so we can have someone put these communications out and keep everything up to date, because we're not, we're just not communicating as well as I'd like for us to. And I think all of you would probably agree with that. And to put it in the perspective, I have the city's Facebook on my phone, and half the time, that's how I have to do things. I have to stop what I'm doing to try and post something on there. And I'm sure I'm not even doing great about that myself, but I do the best I can. But there's so much that we're missing that would tie this all together, and this would flow under through my office, and we'd be able to get things out, in my opinion, a more effective manner. So I'm asking to put this person on as an addition, but I think it would be a great benefit for our communications to the public.
Yeah, I think, I think we have a great website, and there's, there's not enough content, and that's of no fault of Kyle and no fault of Sam at the rec center. It's just not their job. So I think this is, this would be a great benefit to get everything out there. I agree with this position.
Does it affect the budget?
It's, I mean, we're looking at one. As nominal, McGraw-Ski, maybe $35,000. I mean, it's not.
I don't think I'll need to amend the budget for this. I can move money within the general fund to take care of it if needed.
Now, I had asked the mayor to take another look at the job posting, the description. So in which case should we wait till you get that fixed before we pass that?
It's fine the way it is. Mark and I talked about it. It actually encompasses, it doesn't specifically say it, but it does encompass that in there. So it's not like, that that's not part of that. It's not something we need to adjust. And we can even do that later without having to do it legislatively, because it already basically says.
Yeah, if you look at Section 2 of the legislation, it does provide some flexibility for the administration to make adjustments to the position description after the fact without having to come back accountable every time.
What we were talking about is that I had brought up the fact that it wasn't very explicit in the job description about the website. It mentioned social media and print and stuff like that, but it didn't explicitly say you'll be in charge of the website. So I thought it was left out, but they think it's fine, so we don't have to amend that. Or they have the ability to change it if it does need to be changed. So, that being said, would you folks like to do one, two, three on this, so we can get the position posted? Or would you like to wait on it?
I'm going to suggest one, two, three, so we can get the position posted and let the ball start rolling here, because we've got a lot, some are coming up pretty, on us pretty quick.
Yeah, that's a good point. Anyone else have any thoughts on it? All right, let's do one, two, three on this, please. Any more questions? All right. Next is disposal of some equipment. Mr. Wilson?
Well, yeah, this is sale of an enclosed trailer. It's a, it was used by the fire department for trenching and shoring, I believe, 25 years ago, 24 years ago. It's $19.99.
Chief, ready?
We, we really, no one seems to have use for it now, this old trailer. It's probably worth about three grand. That's where we set the minimum bid, and so that's where we're going now.
Just to add to that, we've been, I've been working with Dan because going through the yard, and we're starting to dial down some things. There's a lot of things that are sitting in our yard that we need to remove, dispose of, sell, and that's kind of what's bringing a lot. You're going to see more of this coming, because there's a lot of stuff we just need to get rid of. We were kind of keeping things with the hopes of using them, but years go by and it's like.
Yeah, they rot a bit. All right, this is kind of a no-brainer, so let's do a one, two, three on this, if we will. All right, the next is the Longwood Park multipurpose field expansion project. Mr. Chaddick?
Thank you. I am very happy to announce to all of you that we have enormous numbers in our sports programs, which also presents new items that we've maxed out our space. So we are looking to build two fields in Longwood South. So basically, as you pull into the rec center, there's a tree wall right there. On the south end of that tree wall, a long time ago, there used to be two fields back there. So we are going to basically reconstruct those fields in the same spot, add some more appropriate drainage to allow those fields to hold up a little bit better during our spring seasons. And we will look to, right now, we're looking to go to bid, so we can get a contractor in and obviously come back to you guys to get approval on that. We would like to get these built in the linked, mid to late spring, so that way, in hopes of them being prepared for fall season. And then we will continue with our capital growth through the next year. This was pre-planned capital that we've been talking about for two years now. Just to give you guys perspective, our fall soccer program was at 200 kits, by far the largest we ever had. Spring is typically 150 or less. We, as of like two days ago, we were at 190, 196. We have a waiting list of six people. So we're booming, and we don't have enough field space. So this would be prepared for us in the fall. Same with our flag football program. There's multipurpose fields, so it'd be flag football. It would be soccer, lacrosse, which we do have now. And then ultimate frisbee was another one currently going on at Barnabas that people have asked about doing here, but we just don't have space.
And this is already in the budget?
Yeah, it was pre-planned capital. JB and I started planning it like two years ago.
Okay. Yeah, we've been hearing about it, you know, a lot. And the Parks and Rec Commission, he always brings it up. Any, any questions on this?
And the little fields across the way will still be used for practice.
I can give you, I can give you a fast-forward view if you want to see what's going on there, because now, in 2024, we will recondition those fields with the hopes of adding another. So that's pre-planned capital, but that's for 2024. That's not for now. So yes, however, we need these fields done first, because we have to do a one-season transition of them, which is going to make things enormously tight for us for one season. So yes, yes, answer your question.
And at some point, when you do the one across the street, can you consider real bathroom? The bathroom that was put at the field?
I can consider it. You guys would have to appropriate that. I would be happy to do that for you. Consider it done.
The concession stand bathroom was done by a committee that I was on.
You're talking about the baseball fields?
Yeah.
Okay.
That concession stand. It used to be a bar, okay?
A bar?
So we had a committee with several, Ms. Larmer, who was in charge of baseball, and the Pilatos, who had football, and I was soccer. They stole the money. Yeah, I still have my Massachusetts soccer track in here. It's ancient. I was trying to figure out how old it is the other day. It's over 30 years old.
Massachusetts track teacher?
Soccer.
Massachusetts soccer?
Yes. Started it with John Howser. That tells you how old that is.
Older than the rec center itself. All right, folks, so it sounds like Jason is really hoping to get this rolling sooner than later. I mean, a spring, even to be able to go out for bid, that's going to, you know, cross your fingers. So does anyone have an objection to doing one, two, three on this? It's already planned. Let's get it done. Let's help them out for the fall. All right, thank you. And this next one, Mayor, you want to speak to this?
Sure. This is something that a lot of the communities are putting out now, urging the railroads to keep their things a lot safer than they've been of late. We obviously have a lot of problems with the railroad that are occurring. It's becoming more to light. I question whether or not we were even made aware of these things in the past, but now they're there and we're seeing them. So I did meet with Senator Wobner. She's a champion behind this too, and she's working very hard to hold their feet to the fire. So this is just a way for you, council, and me to say, clean your act up, railroad. It's time.
Any questions on this? Would you guys like to do this one, two, three, or do you want some input from the community? I can't imagine the community would have.
Yeah, I think, I think they got our backs on this one.
Yeah, I think the community would all like to be safer and to feel safer, or at least be better informed. So let's do one, two, three on that. And we still have this item table. Mrs. Todd, did you want to add your other legislation today?
Yeah, I would like to propose that we waive the 48-hour rule and add the one for the donation to the Historical Society of Old Northfield, AKA Macedonia Sagamore Hills Northfield Village, Northfield Center. You all should have received a copy of it, as well as the list of exactly what they're going to buy. They understand they will be held accountable. It has to be spent what they have. They're gearing up for, they do after the parade. On Memorial Day, they come over to Memorial Park, and they have a display also. And that's when you read about the, I don't know, called a dummy, but the model for the uniform that they use, that'll be there.
Okay.
So I've also reached out to Sagamore Hills and to Northfield Village to see if they would all be interested in contributing, since this is basically a historical society for the whole community. So I've gotten positive responses, so I'm hoping this will help that community. They do a lot of stuff with zero money.
Yeah, they do.
They pay out of pocket for almost everything, whenever telling me so. You're also welcome to become a member, if you want, and you're always welcome to come to the meetings. And if you want to set up a tour, they're not open yet because of the winter time, but I'd be glad to show you through. The only, I think it's only, Northfield Elementary, is that what it's called? It's the only third-grade group that goes there. So we'd like to also work with the schools to help out, do a little war with that community. If you go to Europe, ask a kid about the Irish Revolution. They can tell you everything. You come here, nobody realizes this was founded by two guys who had a farm. I mean, it's amazing. So, and I'd like this one, two, three, if possible.
I think we're going to stick with, with a one on that, Jim, just because we do need, we would like community input. Perhaps we'll do two, three next time. I will do the second in for the 48-hour rule, if you have proposed that. And then you can go ahead and propose the reading, if that's all right. So perhaps we'll get it finished next meeting, but since it is, you know, an appropriation that's kind of come out of no, not nowhere, we've been talking about it for a while. But let's see if we get any community input on that, and we'll stick it at one this time. All right, anyone else have any other items for, for this agenda, or anything they want to speak to? All right, fantastic. We got a couple more minutes before the hearing at 7:15.
Everybody hurry up in John's bathroom.
Everybody hurry up in John's bathroom.
Yeah.
Okay, you gotta go downstairs.
Hello and welcome to the March 9 council meeting. It is 7:30 PM. Well, Mr. Hoover, please call the roll.
Ms. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Thank you. Now, if you would all stand, gentlemen, remove your hats for the pleasure of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is very nice to have guests with us this evening. Normally, we have about one, so thank you all for coming. I'm glad to see you. We're going to parlay the hockey team with our new chief today, so chief, you can go up to the front with me. I'm going to do the swearing in of our new chief. So everyone knows, this is not something that happens every day. The last chief was in place for how many years?
Twenty.
Over twenty years he was chief, so this is kind of a big deal to have a new gentleman step into this role and I'm very proud to have him, so I won't belabor the point. Please raise your hand. If you have to. I Vincent Lee Yakapovich. Do solemnly swear in my.
Do solemnly swear in my.
That I shall uphold and support.
That I shall uphold and support.
In word and spirit.
In word and spirit.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
All laws of federal and state.
All laws of federal and state.
The charter ordinances.
The charter ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of Macedonia.
Of the city of Macedonia.
And that I shall faithfully.
And that I shall faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge my duties as chief of the city of Macedonia Police Department.
Discharge my duties as chief of the city of Macedonia Police Department.
During my term of office, as I shall answer to God.
During my term of office, as I shall answer to God.
Congratulations.
So, not much of a public figure, but first want to thank the mayor for your trust and confidence, and I'm honored to be appointed chief. This is hard, it's tough. I can't seem to support all of you that are here for me, family, my wife, my son, mother in law, my brother, family, extended family, friends, and dedicated people that I work with. I appreciate all of you, and I look forward to serving the community in this role. Thank you all.
I'll also point out that Chief Yakapovich is a Nordonia graduate, so.
No excuses, chief.
He'll still be good.
We don't believe it.
Yeah, I actually am young with chief. I won't say.
I still look better. All chiefs are Nordonia graduates. This is no offense to someone who's not, but I'm kind of proud after a bunch of you are here, because now you're home to be graduates. Ms. Brandt.
You.
Ms. Tully. Vinnie Sari, and myself, so I'm kind of proud of you. You're awesome.
Mr. Gooddaddy as well.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, comments.
Hey, guys. Can I have the hockey team up, please? Hey, bros. Don't be shy. Come on up. It's a certification, a certificate of recognition for the Nordonia Knights Ice Hockey Team. And it says, whereas we acknowledge that active participation in organized athletics is influential to building good character and teaches a wholesome sense of fair play and good sportsmanship among our youth. And whereas in order to excel in any one sport, a young person must demonstrate an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and heartache. And whereas a vivid example of this has been brought to our attention by the achievements of the Nordonia Knights Ice Hockey Team as they've earned their third.
Wow.
Third consecutive Greater Cleveland High School League Blue South Ebonium Championship with a league record of nine and ones and an overall record of fifteen to nine, and captured their first state tournament win in sixteen years. And where we congratulate coaching staff head coach Rich Sinali.
I always get the Italian, but.
Assistant coach Dominic Sinali. Assistant coach defense Nick Asbury. Is that right? And players freshman, oh, this one's tough. Dominic Nanny.
Yes.
Colin Schleinen.
No.
Yeah. Evan Cerny.
Same.
Sophomores Noah Vega. Patrick McNally. Juniors Owen Tyndall. Jacob Waite. Brett Rapp. Frankie Costello. Simon Kisselus.
Yeah.
Good. It's young, it's not.
And seniors Dale Kimpton and Kevin Wicks. Now therefore, I do proclaim March 9, 2023, to be Nordonia Ice Hockey Day in our city and extend them my personal congratulations and also those of all our citizens. We appreciate the team's athletic prowess and wish them every success in future competitions. Congratulations, everybody. My first one, my family moved to Macedonia when I was very young. I played hockey in Darkville Heights, it was a big deal, and I really enjoyed the sport. Unfortunately, when I moved here, we didn't have a hockey team, so I'm very jealous of you guys because I loved to play back then, but my career ended when we moved to Macedonia, so pretty awesome stuff, and you guys are always proud of that.
I'm sorry, I have to say, players.
Yes, when we're getting a rate, and I looked into that, one rate is five million dollars.
That's doing it.
Counsel appropriate the money. I'll be there. I'd like to thank Mayor Molder, thank you, City Council. It's a great honor to be here, and the team worked super hard this year to get where they had to be. We were very short-benched this year. Everyone played super hard, and especially the parents, thank you for helping us all out, and we'd like to give just to Mr. Mayor Molder a little appreciation.
Thank you.
It's the first that, nobody's seen it yet, so you'll get a push to see that.
A little scary.
Yeah.
I'm doing it again next year, right?
Absolutely. It's up to the guys. We'll see you back here on the same day next.
Keep it consistent, right? Any else, Coach?
That was it. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hold on, I always say that someone next to, stands next to someone taller than me. That's never happened, I love it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
You know how many people are, like, in the community?
How many people live in Macedonia?
Like Macedonia, Sagueno.
It's about thirty thousand across all over down there.
I know Macedonia is about twelve thousand five hundred.
I think it's about thirty thousand across all the communities.
You guys don't have to stay for the meeting if you don't want to.
Yeah, please.
It's a requirement, everybody stays. It's not all that exciting.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, it's really, it's a family.
Yeah, I'm not used to it.
Yeah, it's been a long, it's been a long process, I just want to make sure to take it to a finale.
Yeah, he's, I remember back in September, knowing him, it's been a long time. Different processes to him, so.
Uh, no, but they are supposed to be, yeah, I, uh.
Oh, yeah, we drive them.
Yeah, I think Jack will get a letter after banking business, so we just have to, you know, probably give, give them a call.
All right, I'm going to continue on with the meeting here, folks. Do we have an approval of the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from both the public hearing and regular council meeting from the Thursday, February 23.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments, we have none this evening. Any correspondence from the clerk?
Yes, sir. I received a call from a resident of Macedonia, Lyndon Nemetrick, who wished to share concern with speeding along Route 82 between Giant Eagle and North Bedford Road. She's of the belief that there is currently no accountability on that section maybe two that passes through Macedonia, and she would like there to be a police presence or at least a flashing radar speed sign placed along that section of the road. And then I also received an email from former police chief John Golden. Says, "To Police Chief Vincent Lee Yakapovich, as you know, I spent the past twenty-one years looking for ways to get out of attending council meetings. This, however, is one council meeting I would have loved to attend, but as you all know, I am still out of town. I wanted to be there to support and celebrate your promotion. You have most certainly earned it. Without taking anything from the other candidates, this was clearly the best choice, and quite frankly, it was the only choice. And now the work begins. Your lieutenant's position must be filled, you have patrol and dispatch positions to fill, and don't forget, you need to find and hire a new administrative assistant. As if that wasn't enough, you need to establish and set your direction for the department. The next six months are going to be a challenge, but you have the knowledge, skills, and ability to accomplish each of these tasks and more. I'm sure we'll talk more in the near future, but I'll end with this. I can't thank you enough for all of your support, loyalty, and guidance while I was chief. I couldn't have accomplished half of the things without you. I will be there for you whenever you need me. I know Jack and Carol are looking down, proud of what their youngest has become, what he has accomplished, and are smiling. Your friend and biggest supporter, John."
Very nice.
Do you know if that's been given to the chief? Because he wasn't in the room when he wrote that.
I think he's, yeah, I think he's been apprised of that.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, moving into pending our new legislation, starting off with ordinance number 12.
I move to offer ordinance number 12, 2023, for its third reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for donation of the real property known as permanent parcel numbers 33-00010, 33-00012, and 33-03316.
So this is the conversation we've had for quite some time here about the aerosol building on Valley View Road, 9150 group, 9150 Valley View Road. My intentions for this building are to make this our next service department and potentially some other things within that building too, but this is the last step in moving towards taking the building into our own fold. We're going to purchase the building if approved for one dollar. I think it's a great deal, all things considered. There was conversations in the past about EPA issues within the building. Through the law department, we've worked through that. I can assure everyone that that building is safe, anyone in and around that building is safe, and I would not put anyone in any danger if that was the case. So if the Environmental Protection Agency says it's good, our lawyers look through everything and say it's good, I'm going to trust in their professional opinions that this is the best move for us going forward. Any other discussions? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance 12, 2023, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, counsel. This is, it's been a long road to get to this point, just to take this building into our own fold, but more to come here in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Gooddaddy, for all your hard work on this, too.
Sure, yeah, and I'll just note, so now the next step will be for the mayor to sign the donation agreement, which is really what we've been negotiating for the past couple months, and we'll have some title work done, we'll have a title policy, and then it'll take approximately forty-five days before the transfer actually occurs.
So any delays in getting this thing moving is not bore by me.
Right.
It's the darn legal process, so we'll, we'll work with it. Okay, ordinance number 22.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 22, 2023, for its first reading, or second reading, I'm sorry, by title only.
Second.
An ordinance approving the application for placement into an agricultural district of the real property located at 9066 North Bedford Road within the city of Macedonia.
Ordinance number 24.
Yes, I'd like to offer ordinance number 24, 2023, by title only for a first reading.
An ordinance approving the application to renew the placement of land in an agricultural district with reference to the real property at 9541 North Bedford Road.
Ordinance number 25.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 25, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Specialized Construction, Inc., for certain improvements along City Hall's emergency driveway.
Director Jalati.
Yeah, as discussed earlier, this is the first of three contracts to be awarded tonight. This is for various pavement and drainage improvements to our emergency services driveway right here at the city hall. Specialized Construction will be the contractor.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance 25, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 25 carries. Ordinance number 26.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 26, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Specialized Construction, Inc., for the 2023 road program.
Mr. Jalati.
Yes, this is our annual road paving program, which everyone loves. Also, Specialized Construction will be the contractor for this project as well.
When do you anticipate work starting?
Mid-May.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I ask that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number 26, 2023, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Specialized Construction, Inc., for the 2023 road program.
Mr. Jalati.
Yes, this is our annual road paving program, which everyone loves. Also, Specialized Construction will be the contractor for this project as well.
When do you anticipate work starting?
Mid-May.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I ask that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number 26, 2023, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 26 carries. Ordinance number 27.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 27, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Parent Asphalt Company for Golden Link Boulevard resurfacing.
Mr. Jalati.
This is for resurfacing of Golden Link Boulevard and the Crossing Shopping Center. Parent Asphalt will be the contractor. This will be done at night to avoid traffic.
Is it the, it's the whole way, right, or is it just half of it?
Come in the main entrance off 82 to the four-way intersection, and then hang a left all the way to the Great Escape. That's the public road.
Oh, so like, the one that goes to Giant Eagle is not?
That's not, no, that's private property.
Okay.
Hey, what's your pleasure?
I move to offer ordinance 27, 2023, and adopt according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 27 carries. Ordinance number 28.
I'd like to make a motion to read ordinance 28, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading. By title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending section one of ordinance 79, 2022, which established the compensation schedule for the non-union city employees of Macedonia effective January 1, 2023.
So this piece of legislation is to bring something for the city that we've been needing for quite some time. It's a communication specialist, it's someone that will drive information out to the community through our website, through social media, and even some print forms, but a lot of communities are going to this to where they have a person dedicated to it. Something that came to light of late that we are aware of is that the newsletter's not going to have a print version. I want to get the best, cleanest information out to the public. Currently, we have a bunch of different people trying their best and doing things outside of their roles for a lot of the time, that they're, they're putting this, this information out, and it's just not what I feel is best for our community. The biggest thing and the best thing we could do is give all the communication we possibly can give to the community. That's why I'm asking for this today, because we are at a point where we need it. I actually had an individual come in and talk about content, and he had, he made a pitch to do content for it, and it really put it into perspective to me, because there's a lot of communities he's currently working with to put things out, and he gave the, the ideas of what he was doing on the communities and showed the cost of it, and he was someone that would be a subcontractor for that. I thought to myself, if we had that in-house and we could get this information out every day, almost at all hours, and at any time, we're going to do our better job of letting the community know where we're at and what we're doing. So that's my intention with it, and that's why I'm asking counsel for this today. So I'll open up the floor for any further discussion.
Could Councilwoman Brandt do this? She does it all day long, now.
Actually, I might be interested in sitting in on interviews with that.
I'd love to have you in there.
Yeah, that would be cool.
Again, this person will be on site. What my intention again is that, you know, they're going to go around to the departments, and, you know, what do you got going on this week, or what do you have going on today? What can we put out there to the public? What should they know about the fire department today? What should they know about the service department? You know, better, clean information, that's what I'm after with this. It's going to, it's going to work to our favor, because we live in a day and age where this is what everybody wants, and they want it now. We can't always do that now, because I don't have that ability with the staff that we have and how busy we are, so, not to beat a dead horse, but I just wanted to put that into perspective for everyone.
Yeah, I'd also support that Ms. Brandt's part of the communication when you do the interviews.
I have no problem.
Because.
It's kind of your field, right?
That's her life.
Yeah, that's what I do. I work at the internet visa.
I think that would not be a bad idea.
Yeah, that would be great.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass ordinance number 28, 2023, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 28 carries. Resolution 29.
I move to offer resolution number 29, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the disposition of certain municipal property by the city of Macedonia Service Department in accordance with city of Macedonia codified ordinance section 121.05 and Ohio Revised Code section 721.15.
Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is for the sale of a enclosed trailer. It's a 1999. It was originally used by the fire department for some equipment, storage, and training purposes. They no longer use it, haven't used it in a long time. It's a twenty-four-year-old trailer, and we've set the minimum bid at $3,000. I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution number 29, 2023, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 29 carries. Resolution number 30.
I'd like to offer a resolution number 30, 2023, for its first, second, and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the director of Parks and Recreation to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the Longwood Park multipurpose field expansion project.
Director Chet.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be to add two fields to Longwood South. It would be multipurpose fields used for football, soccer, rugby, ultimate frisbee that would go essentially behind our tree wall there right to the south of the rec center. This is much needed, as most of our athletic programs have maxed out in space. We have an ability to increase the number of participants, and now we also have to increase our number of facilities to be able to do that. So that would be to add two fields. We would get that work done in the spring and look to have those usable in the fall.
Just for clarification, when you say Longwood South, you mean west of the current baseball fields?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
As opposed to north, north of 82.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yep.
What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post resolution number 30-2023 according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 30 carries.
Long overdue, yes.
Yes. They're bringing them back, right? They used to be there. You're bringing them back, but better this time, with their proper drainage.
Yes.
Nobody's going to go, if you build it, they will come, or?
I could tell you how long ago it was, but...
The issue is they already, they already came, and we're not there yet.
It's before my gray hair, okay?
That's another cornfield.
That we had stuff there. We played soccer there all the time. Thank you.
Two agricultural districts, so. Anyways, resolution number 31.
Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution 31-2023 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution urging the United States Congress and the Ohio General Assembly to immediately enact legislation to further protect the citizens of the city of Macedonia, Ohio, from the dangers posed by train derailment and on railroad tracks located in the city of Macedonia, state of Ohio, and throughout the United States.
So essentially, what we're looking to do here is hold their feet to the fire, as we talked about in our work session. You know, a lot of things have happened on the railroad of late, and we're hearing about them. And I question whether or not we've heard about these things in the past in other areas, not just our own. So I think this is a way, and a lot of communities are putting this out now, to say, come on, clean your stuff up, and let's get this back on track. No pun intended. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law resolution 31-2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 31 carries. Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to waive the 48-hour rule and add ordinance number 32-2023 to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, now, thank you all. I'd like to offer ordinance number 32-2023 for its first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance appropriating funds for the preservation of the city of Macedonia historical items by the Historical Society of Old Northfield.
Thank you. Anything you want to add tonight?
This is requesting a $500 donation. In parallel, I've also gone out to surrounding communities to ask for their engagement. This Historical Society is for all the separate communities, because we started out as one. And if you need to know what the money would be used for, they specifically have identified it, and we have a copy of that. You can just ask. Our clerk or council will be glad to share with you. Thank you. Thanks for your consideration.
Thanks for doing the work on this, Mrs. Tullow. You've really put a lot of effort into communicating with them and really honing in on what we will be appropriating money for. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll go into the mayor's report. The February 2023 revenue was $36,732. First and foremost, on my things today, I want to congratulate Chief Yakapovich.
Thank you.
You know, over the years, you and I have worked on a lot of different things, and I want to talk a little bit about the process, but I want to focus mostly on you, because you're the new chief. But the way this works now is, in the past, they would just take a test. Whoever scored highest on the test would get the job. We had talked to the Civil Service Commission about changing that to where there's a test, there's an assessment center. The top three then go to the mayor, and then the mayor selects the top person that he or she feels at that time. So that's kind of what we do now. That's the way the process works. Fortunately, again, we have Lieutenant, now Chief Yakapovich in that role, and I'm very proud to have him there. And I know that he's going to do an amazing job and have every confidence in you and your abilities, sir. So I also want to thank the chief next to you, because the unity between the two of you, I think, is amazing. And if you notice, both of them are Class 3s, they're going to be called?
Class A's.
I'm sorry. You can tell I was not in that field.
You've got lots of stripes.
They're both wearing their Class A's with lots of stripes on their arms, and that's a testament to their abilities and what they do. And not only that, all the people here today, like all the friends and family here to support you, I mean, that's just amazing, and that should make you feel good.
I appreciate it, Mayor. And like I told you, I moved here in 1974. Went to school here. I've worked here all my life. Yeah. The community is my community, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. I wasn't even born yet, just to...
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
I have a little bit of fun in there. But thank you again. I'm looking forward to working with you. Today, I had the pleasure of being at the high school for the STEM program that flew through the Rotary Club and a lot of unity between the school and the principal. I got to tell you, it was really awesome to see the students doing what they were doing today. They were making little robots that would pick up a ball and throw it into a thing where they got a certain point total, and they won prizes, and actually cash prizes and trophies and all kinds of neat stuff. But not only that, there was a bunch of companies there and schools, and it was really neat to see what they put on there for the students to go and get an idea of what's out there. And not only that, promoting science, technology, engineering, and machining? Was that correct?
Mathematics.
Mathematics. I never liked the algebra field, but, you know. But no, it was really awesome to have that, and I'm thankful that we have a Rotary Club. One of our former presidents, Dr. Seifor, was in charge of that, and he did a really good job with it. So I want to thank all of them for that. Next on my list, I want to wish the girls and boys bowling team the best at states, the mock trial team, and the indoor track qualifiers. We have an amazing group of students and athletes that go to all these different things. What did I miss?
Wrestling team also.
And the wrestlers, I'm sorry. It was on here, and I didn't see it. And the wrestlers. There was a clapout today. We're thankful, again, police and fire gave them a nice send-off and drove them off to the highway, so that was really awesome. But what a testament to the amazing students and athletes that we have at Noragonia High School. So I wish them the best and bring some trophies back. That's always good stuff. I want to talk a little now about skimming devices, and I'm sure our new chief will be touching on this as well. We put something on our website today. There's a problem that we had in town, and I'll let him go through that in his report. But I want to talk about how you spot a credit card skimmer. It's on our website. I would encourage everyone to go look at that. It's something I've been aware of for some time, but anytime you stick your card into something, I always grab it and see if it's loose, because what they do is they stick it over the top of wherever you're sticking your card into. Like, if you're at the bank, or if you're at a store, I always try to wiggle it just to see if it's loose, because they just simply stick this thing on top of it. They read your card, and then boom, they're taking everything you got. So it's something to be aware of. I would encourage everyone to go to macedonia.oh.us and look at the article that we put up there, because it's a really good insight to what that is, how these scumbags work, and how they're trying to steal your money. So please, take a look at that. I want to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day. And last but not least, please don't drive distracted. Put the phones down and drive your car. We had a bad accident today. I'm only assuming that it had to do something with the phone, but you never know. The distractions that we have today are getting worse and worse. And I hate to dwell on this, and I know everyone hates when I do this, but I was driving the other day, and I saw a lady with a hand on a plate with pizza on it, steering with her knee, grabbing the pizza like this. And I just thought to myself, my God, it's so dangerous. So please concentrate on the road. You're driving a vehicle that could kill people, your family. That pizza and that phone call and that text message is not worth your life or anyone else's. Please concentrate on the road. Okay, moving on to committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission has their March meeting next week on the 15th, Wednesday. Will that be upstairs or downstairs, do you think?
Upstairs.
Upstairs in the meeting room? What's it considered now? The meeting room, the lunchroom? I don't know, upstairs.
That's our break room.
We'll be up there, and we're always open for public comments at 6:00. That's all.
Charter review met yesterday, and we are currently meeting on a schedule that puts us on the Wednesdays immediately prior to council meetings. Last meeting, I mentioned that we were open to input from the public, as well as the department heads. We've gotten a little bit of feedback. I meant to also mention that if there's anyone else on council that wants to address the committee or in writing or in person, to just let me know. We will meet again next on the 22nd at 6:00 PM, right over here in the caucus chambers. And I want to thank everybody in council for appointing what I think is a really, really good crew of people. They're taking it seriously, and we're actually making a lot of progress, I think. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Hearing none. Would a department report, starting with Director Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, recently, I have been working on looking into pricing and quotes and specing out some new snow trucks that are in our capital improvement plan in the near future here, as well as some new leaf machines. So looking at, specing out equipment. We did order our three more light towers this week, speaking of equipment. And they're talking, those should be here by July, which are great for Summer Fest and Fall Fest and all those wonderful festivals that we have. Applied for a community recycling assistance grant this week. Helps, it will help us pay for the mulch pile that we create for our residents, where we bring our trees and brush shrubbery and all that. And we bring in, last year, we brought in Brimfield Aggregate, bring a tub grinder in and make the mulch for the residents. As far as work being done, litter, this is a bad time of year for litter, as you know. We're trying to keep up. We really are. It's a constant battle. As the grass is not really being mowed yet, but the litter, just you can see everything. There's no leaves on the trees. And so, you know, when they're mowing grass, you're constantly picking it up. But we are trying to keep up with that. And potholes, that's one of our biggest things right now. Another big thing we're doing in the fleet, we're installing, this goes with the mayor's comment, we are installing Bluetooth hands-free radios in all of our equipment and trucks, so that all of our operators and drivers can be safer on the road and be hands-free. So, end of report.
Thank you. Director Jalati.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thank you to council for passage of the three pieces of legislation tonight. So we'll get moving on those projects. Looking forward to that. And congratulations to Chief Yakapovich. Welcome to the team.
Thank you, Joe.
Director Chet.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, chief. I look forward to working with you in your new capacity. Spring Fest will be April 22nd in Longwood Park. We look forward to some park cleanup and some other activities that will be going on that day. I want to congratulate our Manaray's swim team. We have 14 kids who qualified for the USA Regional Finals this weekend. It's going to be spectacular, first time ever for us. So kudos to them. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Director Vares.
Shocker. Congratulations, Chief Yakapovich. Look forward to working with you. And Monday, July 17th, will be the deadline for Macedonia refund program, unless your return is extended with Rita, at which that would change your date to the extension of the Rita return. End of my report.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome Vince also. It's kind of weird welcoming somebody who's been here almost as long as I have. And I think you said before you were born, he was living here, Mayor, so. Anyway, the drone team, which we debuted at our open house in October, has been very busy. Since our last council meeting, they've been called out four times. Once in Macedonia, which was aborted, they didn't need them. Once in Sagamore. And then actually, we were involved with the rescue, started off as a rescue, and the body recovery for an individual with ties to our community on Sunday, and then again on Monday. It's been a very worthwhile resource. The teams are expanding. It's just a phenomenal thing to have, and the community benefits from it. So no one else has mentioned it, but Sunday morning, we move our clocks ahead. So we have one hour shorter weekend. The mayor's going to give us time off on Monday for that.
I second that.
So what does that mean, Jessica? You don't have to remind me this time. Change the batteries in your smoke alarms. That's the end of report, Mayor. And once again, congratulations and welcome.
I also want to touch on that, because the chief mentioned it's the mayor family that lost their father. He's also a friend of mine who lives in town, obviously. The worst part about it is he brought a newborn home on Sunday and lost his father on Monday. So I feel for them, and I offer my condolences to the mayor family.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Hoover, I had stepped out with my family during correspondence, but I understand from an email that we may have had a concerned resident that had mentioned some traffic issues on 82. Was that read today?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I understand, you know, 82 is a very busy road, five lanes, you know, 25 mile an hour. We certainly do our best to enforce traffic there. I mean, we have, it's, some areas in that stretch are high crash areas. But I ran some statistics, and from 3/7 of 22 until 3/7 of 23, the Macedonia Police Department actually made 379 traffic stops in that 82 corridor. So, I mean, we're there. We try to be visible. You know, we're doing the best we can with those things. Also, I do have an update on the ATM, and I appreciate it, Mayor, that you are asking the residents to look at the website, because there's a lot of good information there. And our investigation now, we've turned it over to the United States Secret Service after identifying 22 victims locally. And the loss from our local victims is over $100,000. The Secret Service has already identified two suspects, international, they're from Romania. By the time they identified the suspects, one had already left the country and was, had landed in Paris. But this extended from northeast Ohio all the way down to North Carolina, and it's probably going to be in the millions. So that, I mean, this is very important. People need to take the time, pay attention, shake the thing, look at it. And if you're not comfortable, if you're not feeling like you could identify it, I know it's way more convenient, but the old-fashioned way, you could still go in and see the teller, or even if your bank offers an option with an ATM inside the building, I would suggest maybe using that one as well. And I appreciate all you guys wishing me a board here, and that's all I have.
I have a question for you regarding the skimmers. Is the tap feature not affected by skimmers, or can it still, like when you tap your card?
You know, there are some, but they're very, we don't come across those very often. One of the issues with this particular skimmer that we had in town, it's difficult to identify. It's an insert, okay? Some of them lay over, some are inserts. But with this particular one, there was actually a camera mounted above the keypad as well, as part of the skimmer. So, and basically, when people were putting their debit card in there, the camera recorded them putting in their PIN. So take the time, look down, examine it. You know, look to see. If something looks out of the ordinary, don't use that machine. I mean, it could be just a small little tab that looks like dirt. Touch it with your finger, see if it comes off, see if it was stuck there intentionally. Technology in this thing is just remarkable.
But using your tap can help reduce, like, that's not going to be available at ATM or a gas station, but when you're in the grocery store?
Yes, I would think that would be, yes. But there are devices out there, but they're not as widespread as these types of skimmers.
Okay, thank you.
Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Chief Yakapovich. I look forward to working with you. HR's very busy. We're working, we've hired two maintenance workers, and they both begin, I believe, 3/27. So we're well on our way to that. We received over 100 applicants for the deputy clerk of courts. So Kathy and I are reviewing those, and should be starting interviews within the next couple of weeks and to get a deputy clerk. I'll be working with Chief Yakapovich on his administrative, and am currently working with the mayor to fill the lieutenant's position. Other than that, just our daily HR stuff. End of report, Mayor.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. It was almost the last week. The rest of this week, I've been focusing on getting new network switch over in the scorer's tower, ready for the lighting setup over there. So we're going to get network over there. New network switch over here in fire to clear up some network congestion issues that they have. An update on the firewall. And then to answer your question on the skimmers, if you're using your phone, they're not going to get you. That tokenizes your transaction. That's the point of using a tap to pay from a phone. So if you're using Samsung Pay, Google Pay, Apple Pay, it's tokenizing the transaction. So it's giving them a one-time-use token to do the transaction then. But if that token's stolen, it doesn't matter, because it's already been used once. So every time you do that, it's re-tokenizing your transaction. So you always want to do that. If possible, that's going to be the most secure way to do it.
I was just talking about tapping your card, but that's another, that's another good idea. That's the most...
Be careful with those, though, because you can walk by people and read those right out of their pocket. Like, I could give you a hug and read all your credit cards out of your pocket if I wanted.
No more hugs for you.
That's why I always tell people, if you...
Don't hug an IT guy.
If you do it, I know technology has a tendency to be scary for people, but if you can use tap-to-pay on your watch or on your phone, tokenizing transactions is the best way to secure yourself long-term. If you can add your card to that, you want to do that. And actually, a lot of the gas pumps now, I only use Shell, and I know a lot of the Shells actually have tap-to-pay right on the phone now. So it's something that a lot of places are going to, because they know it's a lot more... It's something that a lot of places are going to because they know it's a lot more secure than having to physically swipe a card or hand over card information. End of report.
Very good info, thank you.
Thank you. Director Goodetti?
Nora Partzer?
Any unfinished business?
I have a quick one, because you always mention, don't drive distracted. Chief, the new law that comes in about distracted driving, we're, what is it that you can actually pull people over for?
You know, it is pretty new. It makes it a primary offense for, like, phones and distracted driving.